I don't know if you guys know how the NHL playoffs is working. Basically, Western Conference plays all the games in the Edmonton Arena. And then the Eastern Conference plays all the games in the Toronto Arena. But just last week, the Edmonton Arena completely flooded. So.
Oh, no.
Summer storm flooded completely. The city says it's gonna be fine, but you've gotta be a little bit bummed if you're in the Western Conference and you're not going to the dry arena instead of the one that was just flooded like a week ago. I would be expecting a pretty much a full on mildew smell.
Yeah, that's gonna be fine. Like the meme where everything's on fire. It's it's fine. Everything's fine. Yeah.
Wait, did it flood because they like forgot to turn the air on? Was it the ice melted in the rink? Or was it like?
It was a summer storm, summer storm. And it looks like it's like kinda like built, maybe a little bit recessed in the ground. It's a small stadium too. It's only like 20,000 seats. So, or 18,000 even less. So like, uh, it's not that big of an area. So just hopefully it's not like.
Mildew's not that bad.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, I don't know. Are you, what, you don't think mildew's that bad?
Hey, you get a bunch of fans in there. What, how long, how long is it till?
Yeah, it's fucking hockey. Well, it's a sport where you literally can fight each other.
Everyone's drinking beer, which smells a little bit like mildew.
There's another sport within the sport, and it's boxing, and it's fucking tough as shit.
It's just the players breathing heavily with the mildew smell. I don't know. What smells are worse than mildew? I was, I mean, I can't think of many.
I keep forgetting that there's no fans. This sucks.
Yeah, there's no, there's not.
What the fuck?
Like, what's worse than mildew? Like, cigs inside a house?
No, it's different because there aren't like 20,000 people in there to absorb the smell and add different smells to it. That is different. Okay. I can't, I can't wrap my, I can't wrap my head around the no-fans. I can't get it.
It's just a recently flooded stadium that they're.
Vomit is the worst smell. There's no, there's no worse smell than vomit, and then also dead bodies.
Ooh, that is a bad one. That'll be.
You think vomit's worse than like diarrhea?
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think I've ever, well, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna go.
You don't, you don't, you don't ever smell your own diarrhea? What do you?
Have you ever diarrheaed on the carpet? No, people don't do that. They diarrhea in the toilet.
Animals do.
Will's dog did, and I almost killed myself.
That's right. Animals do. Dog smells, cat smells, ammonia from litter box, terrible.
Ammonia's bad.
The Frito smells of like a dirty dog, like it smells like a stale bag of Fritos, not good.
I kinda like that. I kinda like Gussie up next to Hank and giving him a good smell, smelling that Frito. His feet always smell like Fritos.
That's what it is. Yeah.
That's gross.
Moldy laundry bathroom. I don't know. That's pretty bad. That's kinda, that's how, that's, the laundry bathroom is what I'm scared that the Edmonton Arena is gonna smell like.
Ooh, I got a bad smell. Uh, my pantry one time like, um, had, what was it? It was like either grapes or raisins or something that had been hidden for like five years and they turned into mush poison smell. And it smelled like death and I couldn't find it for a while. Then I removed like the things that were blocking it. It was just like grapes that had like turned into.
Something missing in the pantry. Yeah.
Yeah. It was like literally years and years. I'm talking, and that was bad.
You knew you were never gonna eat those grapes. Why'd you buy them? They were just gonna sit there and rot. You, you always have great.
They might have been, they might have been from a family, they might have been from the household before.
And he's that long.
Well, whatever. It could have been raisins. That's what I think. It was raisins. Exactly. I meant to say raisins. Yeah.
You know what's a real bad one? A fart chair. A chair that just gets farted in all the time.
What's yours?
Yeah, the cushion on, oh, yeah. Oh.
Yeah, that's fine. Your fart chair is fine.
Only yours though, but if somebody else's fart chair, you don't wanna deal with that.
You don't know where that's been. Yeah.
Yeah. Which speaking of, I put some lemongrass, um, into my diet, ordered some.
Have you been farting? Have you been farting last year?
I'm trying to, see, I'm saying like, I'm, I'm trying, I'm gonna, I got a daughter on the way, so I don't wanna fart around a little girl all the time. So.
What?
You know, lose a little weight, fart less.
That's not actually your motivation, is it?
I mean, it worked for the Burger King cows. Why can't?
No, but did you actually have a thought to yourself that I have a daughter coming, so I shouldn't be farting?
Yeah, you don't wanna be like a shitty example. Like, I'm a, I'm a trash human. Like, I'm fat as shit, farting all the time, eating like crap. Like, I don't wanna set that example for her. So.
You got, you got like five or six years till she puts any of that together.
Well, right, but I, I gotta start now. Otherwise, if I keep on the path I'm on, I don't want, look, look, I don't wanna give that example.
You're like, um, uh, at Orgeron, you gotta get, you gotta get started because it's a slow running start. You gotta get started now to get to top speed.
I gotta, I need a lot of time to build up.
Yeah, I get it. I get it.
Not being a piece of shit. Yeah.
That makes sense. Build permanent habits. I get it.
Yeah. I'm gonna need those five or six years. All right.
But I have another collusion one for you. Uh, and this one involves two of the sleaziest motherfuckers out there. I'm talking the sleaziest two in any room. Gizlane Maxwell and Jacob Wall. Do you guys know who Jacob Wall is?
I know Galane is the madam that was essentially grooming chicks for Jeffrey Epstein.
I don't need to.
Chicks, I mean, young women, which is fucked up.
Yeah, I don't need to explain Giz, Gizlane to anyone.
Okay, I think it's Galane. I don't know why you keep saying Gizlane.
But somebody, no, no.
Pronounced Jizlane.
Yeah, yeah, Jizlane. Somebody said that to Trump.
A little.
Yeah, somebody said it to Trump yesterday and they were, and he was like, I wish Jizlane well.
Yeah, I lived on Jizlane once. Um, and Jacob Wall. Wall is that little weasel lobbyist, Pat, that, uh, you should probably know about. He's, uh, like far alt-right lobbyist that works with this guy, uh, Jack Berkman a lot. He's famous for doing, spreading false rumors on prominent politicians.
Having the worst Instagram of all time. Like, if you watch, he's the guy who posts pictures of himself like staring out of his window.
He did the, he did.
Just looking for a conservative woman to be my queen. Like shit like that. Yeah.
He started a Liz Warren sex humor where she was like banging like a 30-year-old physical trainer of hers and stuff like that. He does that with like all of Trump's opponents. Um, Republican or Democrat, anyone that steps on Trump shit or is prominent, Jacob Wall tries to spread false rumors about. He's the guy that's famous for, uh, I just left.
Oddly big chin.
Yeah, he's very young too.
Wide, wide jaw.
He's the just-left-the-hipster-coffee-shop guy because he tweeted about leaving hipster coffee shop and overhearing false rumors. So that he did that so often that people just started saying just left the hipster coffee shop and then putting the most absurd thing that's clearly not true after. Um, he's just a piece of shit.
He's also got an OnlyFans account, it looks like. And, uh,
Oh, he's a.
50 bucks a month.
For what?
Well, OnlyFans.
Workouts, probably.
It's like a porno. It's like a porno, uh.
He's like a thirst trap. He's like a thirst trap for like lonely, lonely, ultra, ultra-conservative women.
Add another level of sleaze to it. Um, he did the Ukraine whistleblower thing on the front steps of his partner's house. Anyways, um, so yeah. Uh, well, he threw me off there, Pat, but he's a smear guy. So that's what, that's what, uh.
Couldn't handle his OnlyFans account.
Cause you're thinking about signing up for OnlyFans. It's just 50 a month, Mark.
Yeah, it's gross. Um, he, uh, he basically sort of get Gizlane, Jizlane, Galane hired him to do what he does apparently and smear people. And the people that she hired him to smear was anyone that was, uh, an Epstein or her victim. Or, for example, uh, the New York US attorney that was doing the Jeffrey Epstein case, Jeffrey Berman. They were trying to get him smeared and fired apparently. And the rumor is that Gizlane paid $25,000 to Jacob Wall and his partner to dig up dirt and smear all of these people. That's the story. And it's just three-dimensional slime and sleaze. It just.
If you, if you were gonna take, I would ask for a lot more money than 25 grand to do dirty lobbying for the fucking Epstein.
Interesting. What's the going rate? 25 seems like, I, I know a couple lobbyists that make cash for like not doing much of anything.
Look, obviously, right, morally wrong, Mark. I get you there, but I'm just saying 25 grand is, is robbery for Wall to do this work for such a, such a like shitty people.
Interesting point, Will, because, um, a lot of people think this story is bullshit and totally made up by Jacob Wall, the stirrer of false stories. And that, yeah, 25 grand is a little bit cheap for, uh, Gizlane to, uh, dole out for this. Um, yeah.
Oh, thinking it's a falsity by.
So this story came out and already is like being debunked. People are poking holes in it. It's all leading back to Jacob Wall just trying to get publicity for himself. Because he doesn't care if it's bad press. Any press is good press for Jacob Wall. Uh, there's, uh, one allegation that kind, like, so the only other evidence is there's, there's two pieces of evidence. This 36-year-old model named Kristen Spielman, I think, uh, she came out and told a newspaper, like the Daily Mall or one of them, she said, um, "I was hanging out with Jacob Wall and Jack Berkman, uh, related to a different thing of corruption, and they told me," and I quote, like, "We just got paid $25,000 to work with Gizlane Maxwell to spread false rumors." And they laughed about it. So they have like one witness, but she's a little bit shady herself. And then the other piece of evidence is like, um, uh, some federal paperwork was filed to say that, um, the Wall's partner, Berkman, uh, his company got paid by, uh, someone from Realty LLC, Granite Realty LLC, and Gizlane like bought a house or has a company that she owns that is Granite Reality LLC. So it's like one letter different, but it's the same address. So they're saying this, this company Gizlane's associated with paid, uh, Jacob Wall's partner. We don't know what they paid him for, but there's federal paperwork that says they paid them.
Same company.
Well, it's the same address, so it is probably the same company. So there's two camps. There's people that are saying it's not the same company. And then there's the camp that says it's gotta be the same company because what are the odds that one letter off, it's probably just a typo. Probably just typo, and it's just a big hole, stinky, sleazy mess. Um, so yeah, those are the two camps. You write the 25K. You wanna take it to the internet to see what they have to say?
This guy's Instagram makes me so uncomfortable. Like, I've never felt more uncomfortable than.
He's a weird guy.
Ever than looking at this guy's Instagram.
The worst.
Oh, he's so gross looking, bro. And I'm gross looking. The beeve is nasty. And this guy, this, he's like taking these shirtless pics, like these shirtless fitness pics.
He's doing it thinking he's the real deal. That's the, that's the weird part.
His face is not good. Not a good face.
He's got like, he's like 22, he has an old man chest. You know, and like an old man, like all muscle is, leaves their body. That's kinda what it looks like, but this guy's working out every day. It's, it is really something to see.
He's got Ric Flair chest. Yeah.
This is better than baseball to not, uh, prematurely ejaculate. Looking at this guy's pictures is my new go-to.
Imagine Jacob Wall in your head?
Yeah. Oh, my god.
Him shirtless or his dealings, uh, will probably get it to shrink. Um, the internet has a few things to say. Will Sommer says, "I just got back from Hipster Coffee Shop where everyone was talking about how this story seems almost certainly false and planted by Jacob Wall himself." Boom, roasted. Um, cause that's his little, that's his meme. That's like his thing. And then Cherry.
Hipster Coffee Shop, oh.
Yeah. He would, he would say things. Jacob Wall would say, "I just got back from Hipster Coffee Shop and I heard that, uh, two Democrats said."
Oh, I get it.
"They do like Donald Trump." So that was like his big thing. Like, he would just like, Jacob Wall got busted because he kept saying that so many times that they're like, "You're making all this up." And then he finally admitted, "Yeah, I made up the thing." Um, anyway, so he's punking him on his own thing. Cherry Jacobus says, "Both companies have the same address, so it's likely the same company, but with a typo." So there's.
Is that saying that like, oh, it really could be real?
Really could be real. I mean, it, does it matter?
I mean, I think it probably matters a little bit, but like.
It's made up, guys. Here's what's going on. There's no, there's, Gizlane is hot right now. She's the number one ticket, uh, on the news platform. Uh, you wanna get Gizlane stories out there, Jizlane, whatever. Uh, but here's the deal, there's not much about her. It's just that she's on trial. Like, there was a story that broke last week about like, this is what her cell might look like. Or, you know, they just, they don't have anything and they want stuff. And I think that judge, that Judge Salas, who unfortunately, her son was killed in an attempted assassination, so at least, uh, that wasn't even probably linked to Gizlane. It's possible, but it's probably not likely.
Yeah.
So I think Wall, the ever, the, the opportunist here, is seeing a little window and he's forcing himself in there and just knowing that the media cycle is so hungry for the Gizlane stories that he's just fabricating one.
Right, but does it matter? Because do you think any lesser worth?
Well, no, no, but that part, well, yeah, Gizlane potentially. For Wall, it doesn't matter because you already know, like, whatever, he faked it or he didn't. And I, I hope, you know.
He gets the press either way.
He gets the press either way. You wanna find out if he faked it though, because if Gizlane really is trying to discredit her, uh, or smear, you know, the accusers, that makes her even more likely guilty, right, in your mind? So.
Yeah, wait a minute. She is guilty.
The assumption is, is that she is, but you're hoping that she's going to be, you know, cooperative, uh, to the point where she's gonna give people up. And that if she's going to smear the accusers, that would point towards trying to like, just get out of it altogether.
I believe this is before she got caught though, Will. I think that the whole story is like, she paid 25K to smear the Epstein attorney while Epstein was at trial type thing.
Before she was, okay, but she was still under investigation.
This isn't like, this isn't like while she's in jail, she's paying Wall. Wall's saying this is like, you know, a year ago, he got offered 25K.
Right, but still the same thing. I mean, you, you'd wanna know if it's true.
So you think that just because, just because she was under investigation, the 30 years of her, um, hot, like literally convincing girls to ruin their lives and she, Gizlane should get the death penalty. She's like the most guilty person alive. Like, why would she not?
Okay, well, how are you gonna get that deal to happen or to get her into trial? Right. So like, you have to make sure that you're gonna be able to, to enforce some type of punishment. So, uh, you know, it would be good to know what she's been up to.
Yeah, I'm hoping that she gives up all the names. Um, a lot of those people go down and then someone kills her. That's, that's what I'm hoping happens.
She'll be dead before then. You know, it's, it's, okay, so I have a thought here. So high school sucked for a lot of us. There's no doubt about it. Like, a lot of people spread their wings after high school. And, you know, I'm one of those people undoubtedly, but there's certain people in this world, I think we should be able to put high school rules on. And Jacob Wall is one of them. Cause when you look at Jacob Wall, you know he sucked in high school. You know he was a total fucking nerd and got his ass kicked. But he's still a total fucking nerd and an asshole as an adult. So like, I wanna figure out a way to like, I don't know, like, I just wanna put the high school dichotomy back around Jacob Wall, so I can like shove him into a locker or spit in his lunch or something. I mean, I don't wanna do this to many people, but just guys like Wall. Like, there's certain guys that need to be taken down a peg, if you know what I mean.
I mean, I'm pretty sure the internet does that to him all the time, but.
Yeah, Jacob Wall's.
It seems to be working.
Jacob Wall's like a very successful troll. Gizlane Maxwell ruined 10,000 underage girls' lives.
Yeah, but if you really did work with her, wouldn't you wanna know? I guess we're just all assuming it's completely fake or?
It's fake, but I, I don't care. I just want her to go down with the other people. Um, but the moral of the story.
If he's an accomplice to her, wouldn't you wanna know that? He should face some type of.
He's a lobbyist.
But he's, he's been, he's been illegally or like incorrectly, I don't know if it's illegal or not, he's been incorrectly, inaccurately smearing like the most famous people in the world on purpose, accusing them of horrible crimes, and he hasn't gone down. So I mean, this is like one of 15 for him, Will. It's just, uh, saying things.
I'm gonna keep ignoring it as soon as you finish this story.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying. He's, he commits like libel or potential libel or whatever. She went and found 14-year-old girls, brought them into a mansion, told them everything was gonna be okay, and then proceeded to watch as they got raped. And then told them to find other 14-year-old girls. Like, there's a difference here between a troll and a monster. Um, she being the monster. The moral of this story though is that if you research and report on a story featuring Gizlane Maxwell and Jacob Wall, you're gonna need to take a shower afterwards.
I'm gonna try to figure it out so that I can wake up to his Instagram account, cause that way I'll never sleep through my alarm. Like, if my alarm is having to look at one of his Instagram photos, I'm out of bed. No way I'm going back to bed after that.
We could use that, Pat.
I might, I'll probably lose some weight too.
There's this one black and white photo of him. You'll know the one when you find it, man.
I'm enjoying this, repurposing his Instagram for good. All right, guys, let's talk about deep fakes. Uh, did you guys see this deep fake of Richard Nixon? Uh, giving an alternate speech to the nation as if the astronauts on Apollo 11 died instead of making it to the moon? Did you guys see that?
No, no.
Dude, it is fucked up. So essentially it was made by MIT students as part of an art installation called "In the Event of a Moon Disaster." And it's like seven minutes long, and it starts with, uh, like Walter Cronkite coming on and talking like real news footage. And then it cuts to real news footage of the Apollo 11, uh, shuttle flight. And then it's like, uh, something's wrong. You hear like a beeping and then, oh, they're dead. And then you cut to Richard Nixon doing a fireside chat where he says, "Fate has ordained that the men who went to the moon to explore in peace will stay on the moon to rest in peace." It's like fucking dead on. And it's like four minutes of Richard Nixon talking. And if you guys don't know what a deep fake is, if you're a noob, that's okay. I'll explain it to you. A deep fake is, uh, essentially a combination of artificial intelligence and neurolearning, uh, where some nerds like create realistic-looking videos that mimic mannerisms and voices of other people, like in animation, you can't tell the difference of, right?
Yeah, it's like basically just a computer-generated, perfectly real video.
Exactly. So anyway, this deep fake come out with, from these MIT kids, and I'm thinking like, why can't these MIT students just leave this alone?
Why do they do it? Yeah.
Yeah, leaning into this technology? Why don't they focus their big brains on like shutting it down?
Cause it's coming, just like automation, AI.
Yes, so, so is Cyberdyne Systems, but Miles Dyson shut that down back in 1991. You, you see what I'm saying? Like, history can't repeat itself. We already stopped, uh, the robots from taking over once, and now these guys are just, like, what, like, how do they sleep at night, these MIT motherfuckers?
Don't you wanna be at the forefront of it if you're gonna control it?
There's stuff that's bigger than me, Will, and I just know that it's just not worth developing, in my opinion.
But wouldn't, if you developed it to know it, wouldn't you be able to detect other ones better?
And what, and what year? And I'm pretty sure it's gonna be soon. What year are you gonna be able to be like, I can't tell this, like?
One year from now.
Right, like, any video potentially could be a deep fake.
So this deep fake is a year old. So they released it first as part of the art installation. They set up like a cute little like 1960s living room set, and you'd walk through a museum and you'd watch this fucking fake Richard Nixon. Now, bro, like, I don't even know where the tech is at now.
Well, and then, uh, personality is like, like everybody at Barstool would be the easiest to deep fake because there's so.
That's what I'm saying. Like, any video of any one individual could be a fake. And that, that, but that's plausible deniability as well.
Well, let's talk about that, cause I wanna get into the, the co's and the pros and the cons of deep faking, guys. So let's, let's start with the cons of what potentially might happen when this deep fake technology takes off. So the number one thing that people are worried about is political candidates being undermined. So like, you know, for example, you have like, you do a deep fake of, uh, Joe Biden, um, like, uh, speaking correctly.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. The good news, well, the good news for this current election is both candidates don't really, you know, it doesn't apply to them.
Donald Trump being completely calm and.
Right, deep fake would be an upgrade on both.
That, that's what I'm saying. It wouldn't be a pro for them. Like, for either candidate, like, this doesn't, uh, hurt them.
Right, totally. But like, you could have, okay, so like, do you remember, well, Trump also, cause he's Teflon, like, you had to grab him by the pussy tape, which there was, it was just audio. But imagine if you had like video of Trump being like, "Yeah, they let you grab him by the pussy." Uh, it wouldn't mean anything right now, but next presidential cycle, after this, we get out of this weird situation, that could ruin a candidate or a candidate saying like some racist shit.
I think anything could. I mean, if you, if you, if you produced it and it was, and it was like bad enough, it could definitely ruin anybody. But do you think it'll get to the point where you wouldn't be able to debunk it?
No, so they're working on deep fake debunking.
It's gonna get, it's gonna get desensitized. That's what I'm saying. Like, only the, only the people that wanna really believe the deep fakes are gonna believe that it's real. And then one denial, then the rest of the people are gonna be like, oh, it's a deep fake.
Right. So that's, that brings me to the second con here, guys. So it could be used to incite war. So, Will, you're probably right. Like, if, if a video came out and it was like, you know, politicians saying some dumb shit that they didn't actually say, eventually the truth might come out. Now, now, that creates a whole other problem within itself of people hearing one thing once that's wrong and believing that's true. But imagine this shit. Imagine shit that, uh, is dependent on, uh, a very tight timeline, like someone deep faking the president declaring war on Iran. We already saw what fucking happened with, uh, earlier this year when Iran shot down a commercial airliner because they thought they were under attack. Like, one video goes viral in the right way. Someone hacked Twitter last week. Someone could drop a deep fake from the White House on Donald Trump's account saying, "We're, we were officially launched nuclear weapons and they're coming at fucking Iran." Bam, world over.
Be from Vendetta though.
Yeah, no, I don't think so, Pat.
It'll just, it'll just show up on every screen and then you're just like, and then parliament explodes.
I don't think so. I think that what you're talking about will be, have to be triple verified before you're pushing like a nuclear button. Um.
Okay, I'm just saying, bro, it don't, it moves pretty quick. Let's get to the third con. Your enemies could make it look like you're saying, uh, stupid stuff and that you're stupid and they're smart. Yeah, this would be like a lot of fun to do on your friends that are severe alcoholics, like deep fake them saying some stupid shit. And then they wouldn't remember it. Or, or like Alzheimer patients could be cool too, like, um.
See, that's a pro. That's, this is a pro. You could do, you could do a deep fake, deep fake cameo, right? Instead of like paying for cameos, if you have the technology, you can like deep fake celebrities and have them like send messages to your friends.
Oh, what a mindfuck it's gonna be though, when you can talk to the projection of like a dead relative or like.
Oh, Jesus.
Oh, you know they're doing that, bro. They're doing.
It'll happen eventually, like, or, or like, uh, or like, yeah.
Yeah, and people are profiting off it, like, uh, psychics that say they can talk to your dead relatives now.
Yeah.
But they're, but they're deep faking you.
Let's get to the pros. So the pros are, in my opinion, Mark took that last one as a pro. Number one pro, porn. Uh, I mean.
It's more realistic or?
Well, not so much. I mean, it's not gonna get more realistic, but anyone that's never done porn.
No.
You're saying you could make a porn of anybody.
Yeah, that's a con. That's a crime.
Yeah, definitely.
That's a con.
Yeah, in what country though?
Every country. You can't make a deep fake of your favorite celebrity porn and then be like, this is cool. That's a crime.
It's a, it's a glasses half empty, glasses half full kinda thing, in my opinion there. Uh, that's your take, Mark. Uh, I think it's a pro.
Yeah, I'll stand, I'll stand on that hill.
Okay, uh, putting Nick Cage's face on other actors' bodies in movies is a big pro of deep fakes. I'm sure you guys have seen this. Uh, yeah, big pro, huge pro, can't beat that. Uh, and then the third pro for me is putting Instagram influencers out of business. Cause I'm not a hot chick on Instagram, so I resent hot chicks on Instagram. And also, there's all these virtual celebrities now. They're gonna be taking over, like CAA, one of the biggest talent agencies, signed little Michaela, who's just a fucking virtual celebrity, some basement perv's aberration that he designed in a lab, and now CAA reps her. We can't even get a meeting there. And back.
No, I don't like this. I don't like this because, look, I'm not.
You can make a fake celebrity. Wow.
I'm not simpin' for, like Simone, I'm not simpin' for Instagram models now, but could you imagine like simpin' for like a robot type? It's, it's one step away from like a sex doll. Like, it's not okay.
But you could also get that sex doll in the mail.
Will, do you have a story? Cause we're.
Yeah, yeah, one more. One more. Let's, uh, let's squeeze this in before the end of the show. Uh, this one comes to us from one of our listeners in uniform. We have many. Uh, this is P. Fitz. He's in the Pacific Northwest. And it's a, it's a, uh, about a city council member in Seattle named Lisa Herbald. And you see, uh, despite the police chief of Seattle's warnings to the Seattle mayor Jenny Durkin and her city councillors, including Lisa Herbald, uh, that, uh, it's a bad idea, um, to vow that you will reduce the police force of the city by 50% no matter what. Even, but that's what Seattle says they're doing. They're gonna, they're gonna get rid of 50%. That's, that's, that's the bottom line. That's what.
It's fun for, that's fun for the current cops to hear.
Yeah, and the current citizens, I'm sure, all of them combined. That's what Mayor Durkin and Herb, and the councillor Herbald said though. So, uh, how does Lisa Herbald, that councillor, wanna solve the issue? It appears that she thinks first and foremost, the white officers should be fired first when you're doing these layoffs. And taking it to Twitter, a tweet that she still has not deleted by the time of this show, she says, "In the case of layoffs, uh, being necessary, one threat is firing PIBOC officers first, which is, uh, people of color. Um, chief can request the Public Safety Civil Service Commission ED for permission to lay off out of order. When doing so, uh, is in the interest of efficient operations of his or her department." So suggesting to just, uh, request a waiver to, to, um, institute a racist, uh, layoff policy.
What would that be called? It's like, it's like, it's like affirmative action on the back end. It's like getting fired.
The opposite, right. Yeah. I don't know. It would be the Lisa Herbald policy. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, let, let me, let me play devil's advocate here, cause how do we know that she's not just cutting officers in reverse alphabetical order? So you start with the white officers and then you cut.
The last name white, yeah.
The last black officers.
Oh, I'm talking about their race. Uh, because she specifically used that term, uh, PIB, P, BIPOC, which means that she's talking about anybody who's non-white.
BIPOC.
Also, yeah, I, I hadn't heard it till I read Lisa's tweet, so I guess that's bad on me. Also, uh, this is illegal, thanks to the Civil Rights Act. Uh, because you're not allowed to discriminate based on race or whatever else. Uh, taking it to the internet, uh, you guys have to check.
It's like walking through the squad room. She's like duck, duck goose and everyone. You're fired.
Well, yeah, you remove all the non-whites first and then you duck, duck goose everybody. That's the. Uh, taking it to the internet, you guys should check out the woke racist video from Ryan Long. If you haven't seen that one, it's a sketch about how some of the wokest people in, uh, America right now are just pushing to bring back segregation and discrimination, which happens to coincide with a lot of the racist propaganda. Uh, so a very funny, uh, sketch about this exact situation. Also, here's the comments from Facebook about this story. Uh, Robin Shoup Jr. says, "How about firing all white politicians as well?" So.
It's gonna be quite a rebuilding year if they do that.
Yeah, you'd, you'd need a lot, you'd need a lot of replacements.
You don't have a lot of anchors left on your team, if that's the case.
Hmm, Robbie Butler Boland says, "Someone needs to grab that woman by her nose ring and take her back to school to read the Constitution and the rules and regulations against discrimination and racism." Uh, just plain common sense. A lot of comments about her nose ring. Rachel Russo follows up, "Who's leading her around by that nose ring?" And then finally. Finally, uh, Brian Ryan, and I, it's like always bots, that Brian Ryan may be a bot, but, uh, he, he, uh, has a good point. "I would recommend all police officers begin researching creating private security companies, uh, because once these idiot politicians start dismantling all the police forces, the demand for private security services in those areas by the elites will skyrocket," which is an excellent point, Brian Ryan, uh, if you're a cop getting laid off.
Hilarious name. Flying Brian Ryan.
Yeah, flying Brian, Brian, Brian.
So yeah, Lisa, Lisa Herbald, definitely check out that sketch, the, the woke racist sketch. It's, it's pretty funny. Sort of sums up this whole thing that's going on, where people talk about the political spectrum. It isn't really a straight line. It's a circle. And the further to the edge. And the further to the edge you get, the closer you get to the other edge. Uh, and that's.
Like in Donkey Kong, when you go, uh, you go off screen one side, you come on screen the other side.
It's the Diddy Kong rule, basically. The same thing applies in politics. So um, that's what people talk about at least. And then in this situation with people pushing for renewed like discrimination, it does seem to be the case. And that's gonna do it for Hard Factor Radio today. Join us again tomorrow for a debate between PFT and Large, two titans of the spoken word, going to be electric. Uh, don't forget also to subscribe to Hard Factor News on iTunes, Spotify and YouTube for our daily commute podcast. You can watch it on video, you can listen to it, audio, but most importantly, go have yourself a great fucking day.